Because here is, there's one that they can't.
This meeting is called the Word. Please stand for the invocation to be led by New Vision Worship Center Pastor Brad Corcoran. Remain standing for the place believed in that way.
Thank you. I usually just pray, being led by the Holy Spirit, but as I was praying about this, I believe the Lord wants me to read a prayer that Paul actually prayed over the Ephesians. So, I will pray, so I'll just turn it into our prayer tonight. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we love you so much. Lord, we thank you for all the freedoms we have. Lord, we thank you for this city. We thank you, Lord, that we all here have you first in mind, or that we're praying first and putting you first. So, we're, we give you praise and glory for that. But we also, I also pray for everyone here. I ask, Lord, that they be filled with the knowledge of your will and all wisdom and all spiritual understanding, that every one of us walk worthy of the Lord, fully pleasing him and being fruitful in every good work and increasing in the knowledge of God. That everyone here would be strengthened with all might according to your glorious power for all patience and long suffering with joy. Lord, give us wisdom, give us direction and guide us, for we look to you tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Councilmember Nealon.
Here.
Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Here.
Councilmember Swain.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here. Do you have a copy of the minutes from last month's regular meeting, which was on September 23rd, 2019? Are there any comments, corrections, additions? If not, I entertain a motion to print the minutes as written. Motion. Second. The motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to award a sidearm to retiring officer Captain Brent Grille. Ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution awarding a service sidearm to Captain Brent Grille upon his retirement, whereas Van Buren Police Captain Brent Grille is retiring from the city on November 30, 2019, after thirty-two years, five months, and fifteen days of service. And whereas Captain Brent Grille has demonstrated his dedication to the city and to the citizens of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas. And whereas upon regular service retirement, under honorable circumstances, the city wishes to recognize Captain Brent Grille's service as a police officer and award to him his issued sidearm carried by him at the time of his retirement from service. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the City Council for the City of Van Buren adopts this resolution, awarding this service sidearm, a Glock G-45 Generation Five, nine-millimeter caliber pistol, serial number BLBF-159, to Captain Brent Grille upon his retirement, November 30, 2019.
This is a great occasion tonight. Lieutenant Brown, appreciate you being here. Is there any, is he here? Is he here? Is he out here or not?
I'm sorry, I had to go Springfield pick up cars.
Okay. Appreciate that. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution as read?
I did that.
Second. The motion is second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
The ayes have it, I therefore declare the resolution number...
Ten dash one dash two thousand nineteen.
Ten dash one dash two thousand nineteen has passed. Thirty-two years. That's quite the accomplishment. Cool. That's great. Well, forgive him for not knowing thirty-two years. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to establish a city depository. I ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution appointing a city council member to the city depository board and for other purposes, whereas the City Council of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas hereby acknowledges that pursuant to ACA-19-8-106, the mayor, city clerk, and a city council member chosen by the city council or the city finance officer constitute the board to designate depositories and supervise the depositing of municipal funds for the City of Van Buren. And whereas a previously appointed city council member is no longer serving as a council member and it is necessary to designate a new council member. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the council member Alan Swain is hereby appointed to the depository board of the City of Van Buren.
Alan, what do you deposit? What do you do then?
I haven't told you yet.
This is a standard procedure, something that we do every, every year.
But he was looking sort of smarty.
We trust Alan, we appreciate, we appreciate all his work, so this is something that...
Thank you, Alan. You need a backup. I don't know.
I'll write that down. Motion, your clerk. Second, a second. The motion is second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Stay. The ayes have it, I therefore declare the resolutions as number...
Ten dash two dash two thousand nineteen.
Ten dash two dash two thousand nineteen has passed. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance for the annual library millage tax renewal. I ask the clerk to please read the resolution in its entirety.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance levying, renewing the millage tax for the city general municipal purposes and for the public library purposes for the year 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Van Buren, Arkansas is duly incorporated under the laws of the State of Arkansas with all powers, authority, and duties of a city of the first class. And whereas the purpose of this ordinance is immediately necessary for preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and an emergency exists which requires that this ordinance become immediately effective and in full force and effect. And whereas the City of Van Buren, Arkansas must have funds for its municipal operations and can only obtain the requisite funding to continue its current level of services to its citizens by renewing the levy of a two-mill tax on real and personal property for the general municipal purposes of the city and by renewing the levy of a 1.4-mill tax on real and personal property tax for the Van Buren Library Maintenance purposes. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the rate of all real and personal property in Van Buren, Arkansas, for the year 2019, for general municipal purposes, under the authority of section four, article twelve of the Constitution of eighteen seventy-four of the State of Arkansas. Being the same as hereby affixed at two mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all real property subject to taxation in the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, for the year 2019, for general municipal purposes. Section two, the rate of all real and personal property in the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, for the year 2019, for the maintenance of a city public library, under the authority of a vote of the people of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and the city general elections held on the seventh day of April, nineteen forty-two, one mil, and the eighth day of November, nineteen ninety-four, point four mil, be and the same as hereby affixed at 1.4 mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all real and personal property subject to taxation in the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, for the year 2019, for the library maintenance purposes, subject to the provisions of Act Number eight forty-eight of nineteen eighty-one. The same being adjustment or rollback of tax rates due to an increase in aggregate valuation of taxable property. Section three, a certified copy of this ordinance shall be filed in the office of the County Clerk of Crawford County, Arkansas, in order that the twelfth quarter of Crawford County, Arkansas may include the same in the general levy of the year 2019, and costs to be extended upon the tax books and collected as required by law. Section four, this ordinance being immediately necessary to obtain revenue to pay expenses of the city government for the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, necessary in providing for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. An emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be taken effect and be enforced after its passage and publication.
Do you have a motion to suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Some more.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance levying, renewing the millage tax for the city general municipal purposes and for the public library purposes for the year 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do you have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading?
Some more.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance levying, renewing the millage tax for the city general municipal purposes and for the public library purposes for the year 2019, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Again, this is a standard procedure, something that we have to do every single year. Ms. Porter, do you have any comments? Is there anything to add? Any questions?
Just a clarification question, just, and I didn't catch it when I read it earlier this week, but the third, whereas, says, by renewing the levy of 1.4-mill tax on real and personal property tax. Is that, I mean, is that dramatically right? For renewing the tax on all real and personal property tax? And maybe it is. And then on section one, assessed valuation on all real property, does it, do we also need to have real and property, real and personal property like in section two?
We can add that. Do you see what I'm trying to do?
Okay, I see what you're talking about.
That first one may be okay, just, it just did repeat the word tax.
Oh, okay.
Real and personal, but that...
Okay.
Well, what have we done? I didn't hear it.
This is the millage tax, the property tax that we have for the library that was passed years ago. We just have to renew it every year.
Every year.
Right.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance as read?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I thought we were going to make the correction, not as read. Okay. You change our motion?
Yes.
So we'll change the motion to correct the ordinance to include real and personal property tax. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Sparkman made the motion. Do you have a second?
I do.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman. Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
We also have an emergency clause. Do we have a motion? Motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
The ayes have it, I declare, I declare the ordinance number...
Fifteen dash two zero one nine.
Fifteen dash two zero one nine has passed. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance regarding conditional use permits. I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to amend ordinance number zero seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended for the purpose of adding homeless shelter and transitional dwelling as a conditional use and setting definitions and restrictions thereon within the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas the City adopted ordinance zero seven dash nineteen sixty-three relating to the zoning laws of the City of Van Buren, providing definitions and general provision, provisions governing zoning districts, exceptions, and modifications, enforcement, and abortive adjustment as allowed by ACA fourteen dash fifty-six dash four zero one. And whereas it has been determined by the City Council that there is a need to add a new conditional use to the permitted and conditional use legend, and whereas notice of a public hearing was duly published, and a public hearing was conducted by the Van Buren Planning Commission to consider these proposed amendments, and whereas the proposed changes herein were recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, article two of ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, is amended to add the following definitions, homeless shelter, a facility providing temporary housing to indigent, needy, homeless, or transient persons. Such a facility shall be permitted to also provide ancillary services such as meals, counseling, and vocational training. Separation, spacing, and procedural requirements for homeless shelters and transitional dwellings will be determined by the planning commission so as not to adversely impact the surrounding properties and neighborhood. In addition to the development standard and review guidelines established in article six, section four of ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, issues that the planning commission will consider during its review of such facilities include, but are not limited to, spacing of existing similar facilities, B, existing zoning and land use pattern, C, the maximum number of individuals proposed to be served, the number of employees proposed, and type of services being proposed, D, provisions for readily accessible public, quasi-public transportation, E, access to support services such as social service agencies, employment agencies, and medical service providers. Transitional dwellings, a facility where persons are aided in the readjustment to society following a period of imprisonment or institutionalized treatment, C, definition for homeless shelter for review guidelines. Section two, the permitted and conditional use legend is amended as set forth in attachment A here too. Section three, the passage and approval of these amendments to the Van Buren ordinance zero seven nine nineteen sixty-three, as amended, will protect the health, safety, and/or welfare of the city and its citizens. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance, being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and/or welfare, shall be in full force and take effect immediately after its passage. Section four, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of a section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent, the provisions heretofore declared to be severable.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Some more.
Second. We have a motion, yes. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number zero seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, for the purpose of adding homeless shelter and transitional dwelling as a conditional use and setting definitions and restrictions thereon within the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Some more.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, for the purpose of adding homeless shelter and transitional dwelling as a conditional use and setting definitions and restrictions thereon within the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Mr. Bailey has included some information in the, in your packet. Do you have any questions? Mr. Bailey, do you have anything to add? Any questions?
Do we have any extra questions?
Most of women who are homeless are usually their views, so some of the services provided would be counseling for them.
It could be. This, this proposal, and of course, this definition is very broad reaching, so it could be a, something similar to the crisis center for battered women, or it could be something similar to Salvation Army. It could cover a broad range of different entities. We could focus in on just men, women, or families. Therefore, a community rescue mission in Fort Smith is changing its focus to be just on the homeless, as opposed to just on... So, but this definition is just a broad reaching definition because currently there are, there is, we were, have been approached by someone that wants to consider opening a homeless type shelter in Van Buren, but we have no mechanism in the zoning code now to allow any type of a homeless shelter or transitional dwelling. So, that's all this is going to do, is make that available, so in the zoning code, it doesn't approve any particular location, any particular location will have to come in and be brought back to the planning commission for a conditional use application, which will be reviewed and, and measured up against the basic criteria of the conditional use and the criteria that's in this proposed ordinance. I answered a little more of their question, but I wanted to be sure to nail that out there. Thank you.
Again, this is an effort to clean up some of our codes, some of our ordinances that we have, that normally you would think that this would already be addressed, but it actually wasn't, so I appreciate you sharing your input. Do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance as read?
Motion.
Second. The motion is second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
The ayes have it, I therefore declare the ordinance number...
Sixteen dash two zero one nine.
Sixteen dash two zero one nine has passed. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance regarding changes to the zoning code, more changes to the zoning code. I'll ask the clerk to please read it red, the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, to revise the procedures and fees for text amendments and zoning changes within the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas the City adopted ordinance zero seven dash nineteen sixty-three relating to the zoning laws of the City of Van Buren, providing definitions, general provision, provisions governing zoning districts, exceptions, and modifications, enforcement, and abortive adjustment as allowed by ACA fourteen dash fifty-six dash four zero one. And whereas it has been determined by the City Council that there is a need to revise various sections of the ordinance to allow for a public notification procedure consistent with ACA fourteen dash fifty-six dash forty-two, to affect the fees associated with rezoning applications and provide clarification to the procedures for zoning code text and zoning map amendments. And whereas notice of a public hearing was duly accomplished and a public hearing was conducted by the Van Buren Planning Commission to consider these proposed amendments, and whereas the proposed changes herein were recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission. Now therefore be ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, paragraph B of article six, section four, ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, to read as follows. B, application procedure, the application for a conditional use permit shall be made to the building inspected by the property owner or any agent of the property owner. The application shall include an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven-inch site plan for proposed development. The fee for processing a conditional use application shall be one hundred and fifty dollars. Section two, paragraph C, one A of article six, section four, ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, is amended, to read as follows. C, application and processing requirements, one, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing on all requests for conditional uses after, A, publishing a notice in a newspaper of general circulation in the city at least one time, fifteen days prior to the public hearing, setting forth the time and place of such hearing and the conditional use proposed. Section three, article nine of ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, to read as follows. Article nine, zoning code text amendment and rezoning of property. One, zoning code text amendment, a proposed text amendment may be initiated by the City Council, planning commission, or planning director. Any citizen of Van Buren may request enlisting to the planning commission that proposed text amendment be considered. The planning commission may initiate the proposed text amendment. The planning commission and the City Council shall act in accordance with the procedure set forth within this article. Two, property rezoning and text amendment procedures. A, fee, any private party or parties desiring a zoning change or text amendment to the code shall pay an application fee of two hundred and seventy-five dollars plus all additional associated costs to the city treasurer to cover the cost of public notices and related expenses. B, petition, any private party or parties desiring a zoning change upon payment of the above fee shall submit to the planning commission a petition, giving the legal description of the property involved and the zoning classification requested for the property. The petition shall also include a statement and diagram explaining why the proposed changes will not conflict with surrounding land uses. C, public hearing, upon receipt of a petition for a text amendment or a zoning change, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing after, one, publishing a notice in a newspaper of general circulation in the city at least one time, fifteen days prior to the public hearing, setting forth the time and place of such hearing and the text amendment or the zoning change proposed. Two, posting a sign three feet by four feet in size at a conspicuous place on the property, fifteen days prior to the date of the public hearing and on which is set forth the date and place of the hearing and the proposed zoning change. Three, notifying by first-class mail anyone who owns property within three hundred, three hundred feet of the property being considered for zoning change. Such notification will indicate the date, time, and purpose for the public hearing. The notification must be mailed and dated at least fifteen, fifteen days prior to the public hearing held by the planning commission. D, action by planning commission following the public hearing, the proposed text amendment or rezoning may be approved as presented or in modified form by majority of the planning commission and recommended for adoption by the City Council with the reasons for such recommendations stated in writing. If the planning commission disapproves of a proposed text amendment or rezoning, the reason for such disapproval shall be given in writing to the petitioner. If the planning commission neither approves nor disapproves of text amendment or rezoning within forty-five days, at the receipt of a petition, the action on such text amendment or rezoning by said planning commission shall be deemed favorable. E, action by the City Council, the City Council by majority vote may by ordinance adopt the recommended text amendment or rezoning submitted by the planning commission or may return the proposed text amendment or rezoning to the planning commission for further study and recommendation. If the City Council does not concur with the recommendation of the planning commission, either as first submitted or as submitted after restudy, the City Council may by a majority vote amend this ordinance by granting the original request for text amendment and/or rezoning in full or in modified form. F, appeal by petition to City Council, upon disapproval of a proposed text amendment or rezoning by the planning commission, the petitioner may appeal such a disapproval to the City Council, provided that the petitioner states specifically in writing to the city clerk why he considers the planning commission's findings and decisions are in error. Such appeal shall be filed with the city clerk within fifteen days from the date of the planning commission action. G, re petitions for text amendments and rezoning of property, no applications for text amendments or rezonings will be considered by the planning commission within twelve months from the date of final disapproval of a proposed text amendment or rezoning unless there is evidence submitted to the planning commission which justifies reconsideration. Section four, the passage and approval of these amendments to the Van Buren ordinance, the zero seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, will protect the health, safety, and/or welfare of the city and its citizens. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance, being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and/or welfare, shall be in full force and take effect immediately after, every late upon after its passage. Section five, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of a section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent, the provisions heretofore are declared to be severable.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
We didn't quite read it.
Make her read it all again. Suspend the rules and go to the second reading. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, I declare the motion carries. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, to revise the procedures and fees for text amendments and zoning changes within the City of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Do you have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading? We have a motion, a second.
I'm not going to say anything until we get to the dog issue.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? I therefore declare the motion carried. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third final reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash nineteen sixty-three as amended to revise the procedures and fees for text amendments and zoning changes within the city of Amheron, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Mr. Bailey has done a great job explaining a lot of these changes. The second ordinance that he's included in your packet has the changes that he's made, the planning commission has made and approved. Mr. Bailey, do you have anything specific to add?
I'd just add that, uh, in my, to my background, looking at the state code, uh, fourteen fifty-six four sixteen, it talks about a zoning ordinance shall consist of both a map and a text. So when you talk about amending the ordinance, you're really, are you talking about the text or are you talking about the map such as a rezoning? So in ten of all this, as you've seen, is I've added the word text in there an awful lot, but it's to be somewhat consistent if we can with the state law and that when we're talking about making an amendment, are we talking about the text amendment or are we talking about the map amendment? That's the bulk of these changes. One of the other changes is, uh, changed from the thirteen day to the fifteen day. You saw that on the conditional use procedure and on the rezoning procedures. The Amheron code has, has the requirement of thirteen days in it. The good news is we've been using the fifteen day as our standard, and fifteen day is the state law. We've been following that, but the ordinance just need to be amended to, to say why we're, why we're doing that, uh, or be consistent with the state law. Uh, there were other things in here about, there was, you know, just very simple things being, you know, for example, the posting of a sign. It talks about posting of a sign when there is going to be an amendment, but didn't say whether it's a text amendment or whether there was going to be a map amendment. Well, obviously, we don't post a sign on property for a text amendment. Where would we post it? I guess out here in front of the city hall perhaps, but still, it should be, we made it clear that we're doing that for a rezoning change and we're putting it on the property. Uh, those are just some examples of, and what this was all about, just kind of clear all that up so it would be clear. And also, and also another thing in here, providing a due process for citizens in article nine, the zoning code text amendment, there was no due process for a citizen to make a request for a text amendment. And it said, and we've had the process in there so that any citizen could come and ask for a hearing before the planning commission, and the planning commission thought it was a good text amendment. They could take it up, review it, massage it, whatever they needed to do, and then make a presentation onto the, to the city council. But there was that. The planning, those were intent, the planning commission, as you saw in my background information, the planning commission, uh, did pick up on a couple of things. Also, the eight and a half by eleven, uh, for some reason, the ordinance had, was referring to an eight and a half by twelve sheet of paper. I don't know if there is such a piece of paper out there for the, to cut it, make sure it would meet that, but so it's been amended to an eight and a half by eleven. And then the, another thing was the issue of the fee. The, uh, planning commission, uh, did a quick discussion on that to amend the, uh, application fee from two seventy-five to cover all the costs to two seventy-five plus all additional costs. And the plus all additional costs is every pay the two seventy-five plus all of our publication costs that go along with publishing the ordinance and publishing for the public hearing. And I did a breakdown for you in the, in a memo that would add approximately, I can't get to my memo, you probably already seen it, uh, about two hundred and fifty, two seventy-nine, two seventy-nine, it is, two seventy-nine per rezoning application.
Are these fees consistent? Like, do we know what other cities are charging? Do we have a breakdown of that where we could compare? Or be consistent with the other stuff, maybe consistent with the fees as well?
I don't have that information for you, and we did not have that information at the planning commission that came up on the floor at the planning commission meeting. It was not part of my proposal to the planning commission. That was a procedure that was done in the previous planning director, Mayor Hurson, did that in, uh, two thousand and eleven was the last time fees were compared, uh, conditional use variance and rezoning fees. Uh, and if you'd like, we could certainly do that too, you know, a little bit comprehensive view. But, uh, that, that's the way, I, I can only compare to say what the fees would be in Fort Smith, but that's only one, I know what it was. It was three hundred and fifty dollars in Fort Smith versus the two seventy-five, and that's it. It's just the flat two fifty.
I don't know if that would be worth looking at. I welcome anyone else's opinion on that, but, um, you know, just so we have all that, all the information in it may not change a thing, but.
Sure. I'd be more than happy to, uh, take that up as a project for in future if you'd like to, uh, I would just ask that you not hold up the whole ordinance just for that, if you're concerned about that addition. That provision in there if you're concerned about that.
Planning commissioner chair, did you have just comments?
Just, just one item, and the reason we added the additional fees is because in certain circumstances, the way the ordinance is currently written with just the flat two seventy-five, the city is actually subsidizing, and we take a look at the publishing costs in a newspaper, mailing out the notices to all the affected properties within three hundred feet, you know, in some residential areas, quite a few letters go out, but biggest item was the publishing costs in a newspaper, and it has to be published. And so, as I say, in a lot of instances, the city was paying for part of the rezones that were requested by individuals or corporations and whatnot. So that's reasonable to put that in there.
I feel as to answer, and I don't know if Tyler was looking for, and that may have answered that, but just based on my experience, the, the fees are certainly reasonable and, uh, paying the costs are certainly something that I've been accustomed to doing in other municipalities that I've worked in.
Any other questions? Do we hear a motion to adopt ordinance is read? Motion. Second.
Second.
Motion is second. I will ask the clerk to please call Rose.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Neeland.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
We also have an emergency clause on this, so we need a motion and a second for the emergency clause.
Motion.
A motion. Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Joe's backing up. Didn't this one also have an emergency clause? I don't think we did that.
I don't think this.
I don't think you had.
I don't think that's.
Uh, sixteen?
We did in the body of the, it was on four or something, emergency.
Let's, let's do this one first. Let's, let's vote, so we have a motion and a second on this emergency clause. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I declare that motion carried, and, uh, now we need to have, um, a roll call.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Neeland.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
So the ayes have it. Now I declare the motion carried, which is number.
Seventeen dash two zero one nine.
Seventeen dash two zero one nine has carried. So we can go back to the previous ordinance and have a motion and a second for the emergency clause. Motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Let's have a, one, have a roll call.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Neeland.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
And now we'll, we'll declare that motion carried, the ordinance is number.
That was number sixteen, nineteen.
Sixteen, uh, twenty nineteen has passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the financial report. We have copies of the financial report. Will the clerk please read the email?
One million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, fifty-one cents.
Motion paid bills.
Motion.
Second.
Yes, second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? I declare the motion carried. Under boards and commissions, we have three reappointments. You have the information in your packets here. We have, uh, Ms. Debbie Folliart to the Advertising and Promotion Commission, the Library Board is Ms. Kathy Hubs, and also to the Library Board is Mrs. Jackie Wyatt. Do I hear a motion to approve those reappointments?
Motion.
Motion. And a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? I declare the motion carried. Next on the agenda are the department reports. You have those copies, uh, from all the various departments. If there is any questions, you can ask those now. If not, file those as submitted. We have now miscellaneous and general discussion. We have two street closings. Mr. Les Thomas has included some information in your packet for the Veterans Day parade on November eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and also Mr. Roger Redden, who's the president of our downtown merchants association, Tottenham. We have a New Year's ball drop event on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve those two requests?
I do. I'll make that a motion to approve those two requests.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have a quarterly report. Almost home. It's already another quarter.
Yes, good evening. Appreciate you letting me come and give you guys an update. I gave all of you a report that shows our last quarter from July through September, and it shows that we took in a hundred and twenty-eight dogs for those three months. Forty-one of those dogs were claimed, fourteen were adopted locally, and sixty-four were transported. Down at the bottom where it says a peek at October's numbers, uh, we've already had thirty-four dogs brought in, and, uh, actually, one of the dogs was expecting and had eleven puppies, so that jacked it out to forty-five. We've got twenty-two that have been claimed, three locally adopted, and then we had a total of fourteen that have been transported so far. On the back of your sheet, there is also a high chart that shows where we are for the year. Uh, we've taken in three hundred and sixty-six dogs so far this year, a hundred and thirty-three were claimed, fifty-one were adopted locally, two hundred and seventeen were transported. So as you can see, we would be in dire straits if we did not have our transport system in place, which is working very well. I'd like to just give you a couple of the highlights of things that have happened. Uh, August the twenty-fourth, we had a benefit at King Opera House with Lee Ellen Starb. She's a local lady who now lives in Nashville, and she's a singer-songwriter, and we had a silent auction, and we raised six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars that night. At Fall Festival, we were on site book dates, and we raised six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and got one of our little dogs that was there adopted. Uh, we had our second annual yard sale this last Saturday, and luckily, we had a building down at four oh nine Main, and, uh, because it was a very rainy day, but we made over three thousand dollars on that. And, uh, then something we're very, very proud of, and I hope that as a city, you guys are very proud of it too. Almost Home Shelter, we haven't been in operation three years yet, and we came in first place on best of the best on nonprofit organizations. We beat out boasts and people that have been around for, for years. This is a real big honor, and I hope you guys are as proud of this as we are. We were shocked, to say the least, but, uh, that was a very, a very nice honor. Also, on our volunteer hours, and I think this is just staggering, volunteer hours that returned in this year, and we know that they're a lot, that it's a little bit low, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five volunteer hours. Quite that just a mere ten dollars an hour in labor. That's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free labor the city has received from the volunteers. And everything goes very well out there. We have a wonderful group, but like anything else, all you guys have been involved in different organizations, you always have a little core group that does everything, and that's what we have. And we have some people that are volunteering over forty hours a week. It has become their life. And we need more volunteers. We've got all kinds of jobs, things that people can do, and as a board, we really think it might be time for us to consider, for the city to consider, getting us one paid employee that works at the shelter Monday through Friday, eight to five, because it could take a huge burden on some of these people that are putting in so many hours. We don't, we've got a wonderful, wonderful thing going, and we don't want burnout. We just don't need that. We are really, we have other people calling us, asking us, how do you do what you're doing? So we really, we're really proud of what we've done, and I, I hope that you guys are too. And thank you for allowing me to give a report.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. It really is, it's an incredible volunteer effort. We, Jennifer and I, we, we submitted the application for the volunteer community of the year, and we definitely hollered at Almost Home in all those hours.
Thank you.
It, uh, it's an incredible volunteer effort, and it's something that we need to consider. So I appreciate you bringing that to this, and we can discuss that.
Thank you.
The, the work that they do is really a, it's a great community, um, effort. I would appreciate that. Try not to have your open mouth on this term break this, this.
Oh, okay.
Do the numbers.
That's right. I forgot, I forgot about that. We did, that was still playing on our part last year. We'll, we'll be better this year.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear?
Get your time to go to hell. I'll make a motion, we'll go to hell.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Call Rose.
Is the clerk? We're done.